The Community Preservation Clinic at the University of Illinois College of Law in response to the foreclosure crisis. Then, almost three years ago, I was asked by UC Irvine to design their consumer law clinic to address the most pressing and unmet legal needs of consumers in Southern California. I conducted a needs assessment to determine our focus, paying particular attention to the growing racial wealth gap, the issue that came up again and again with the struggle of homeowners victimized by the PACE program. Since then, our clinic has been overwhelmed with homeowners seeking our assistance. Even with a focus upon representing older adults or communities of color, we have had to shut down our intake after only the first year and are still closed two years later due to the protracted litigation necessary to unwind these complex fraudulent transactions. Thankfully, the current foreclosure moratorium is providing homeowners a temporary respite, but many will be facing homelessness upon the moratorium's expiration. One such homeowner is our client Alma Foster, who you will be hearing from here shortly. This Foster moved into her mother's home 25 years ago to care for her, and after inheriting the property, continues to live in the home with her sister. The Fosters were defrauded by a roofing contractor in October of 2015, fraud substantiated by the Contractor State Licensing Board. As a result of the financial elder abuse, a PACE assessment was placed on the home after she allegedly signed the contract using the email address of none@herofinancing.com, an email address that has now been associated with over 6,500 homeowners. The assessment more than tripled her annual property tax burden, though she filed complaints with numerous government agencies and filed a lawsuit to unravel the transactions. The COVID court closures delayed litigation, and now the PACE financing provider, Renovate America, has filed for bankruptcy, likely leaving her with little to no recourse for having this PACE assessment placed on her home. Due to this, Ms. Foster had to continue paying inflated property taxes. Because of her inability to pay, Ms. Foster's reverse mortgage servicer paid her property taxes and posted a notice of foreclosure sale on her home, costing her mortgage servicer over $114,000 in attorney fees, which were then added to Ms. Foster's principal balance of her mortgage. But PACE not only harms homeowners who are enrolled in the program, but it may negatively impact other consumers attempting to obtain financing. Back in 2010, the FHFA directed Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac not to purchase or refinance mortgages with PACE liens, an urge cautioned by the Federal Home Loan Bank in accepting collateral for advances that may have PACE liens attached. Similarly, the Federal Housing Administration, FHA, in December of 2017, announced that it would stop insuring mortgages on properties encumbered with PACE liens. Then, in January of 2020, FHA sought public input on whether or not FHA should tighten the underwriting requirements in all jurisdictions that allow PACE due to safety and soundness concerns. The FHFA asserts certain characteristics at PACE financing exacerbate the concerns about potential homeowner defaults. First, PACE loan underwriting does not always involve a standard analysis on the borrower's ability to repay, relying merely on the borrower's property value. Second, the transactions are often originated through self efforts of dealers and contractors that take applications electronically, reportedly leaving borrowers unclear about the transaction's terms and risks. The FHFA indicated that in addition to certain administrative fees under the program, interest rates charged to borrowers for PACE are typically substantially higher than for a first lien mortgage on the property. For all these reasons and the reasons the other advocates and homeowners will be sharing with you, we urge great caution in determining whether or not PACE should be authorized in St. Louis County. In our experience, we have found that there's a targeting of neighborhoods of color and of older adults, which leads to the reduction of equity in property and places them at at-risk of imminent foreclosure. So, at this point, those conclude my remarks, and I would turn it over to Steph Carroll at this time.
Well, I'm going to see if... One second, please. One second, I'm going to see if the council members have any questions of you, Stacy. Are there any questions for Stacy from the council members? Seeing none, all right. Did you say Stephanie was next, Stephanie Carroll? Stephanie, are you with us? Oh, there she is. You're on mute.
With my... I don't know if you can unmute me. I'm having issues with my connection.
We can hear you now.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I can't see any of you, but my name's Stephanie Carroll. I'm the directing attorney of the Consumer Rights and Economic Justice Team at Public Council based in Los Angeles. Public Council is the nation's largest public interest law firm specializing in delivering free legal services to low-income communities. And our consumer rights team has provided direct services to PACE victims since 2016. We've assisted over 300 clients at this point, likely more than any other legal service provider in the country. So, at the beginning, what we saw was remarkably similar stories. Free government program is what our clients told us they had been told. There were contracts signed with a few touches on a handheld device like an iPad. And who were these folks? They were very low-income homeowners, often elderly, almost exclusively people of color, often non-English speaking, and many of them living on benefits, some others just living on reverse mortgages. Generally, they came to us some 12 to 18 months after the work when they first got their property tax bills, and they didn't understand why the taxes had jumped from 1,000 to 10,000. Please let that sink in. Think about how easy it would be for you or your constituents to absorb a tenfold property tax increase. What started as a trickle soon became an absolute torrent of cases. Again, the same story. It was sold often as a free government program. In addition to that, though, almost all the work that we have seen has been overpriced, sometimes wildly so. The interest rates we see are generally 8% or more. We have seen shoddy work done. We have seen no work done. We've seen already energy-efficient items being ripped out and replaced with equipment that was already there. We often see that the work financed has bore no resemblance to the home improvement contracts that it was supposed to be funded, and we have seen stacked PACE liens. In one case, we have an elderly African-American client who had five PACE liens on her property. We, along with the other consumer legal services providers in California, quickly became overwhelmed, but we worked tirelessly with legal services partners throughout the state to address PACE at every level. We have negotiated away millions of dollars' worth of PACE liens for the people who've managed to find their way to us. Along with our partner legal service organization in LA, Bets Edict, we filed class action lawsuits against Renovate America, Renew Financial, and LA County. And we set about trying to pass state legislation to ensure PACE administrators needed to take into account our person's ability to pay before they effectively placed large mortgages on their homes, the way that you would with any normal mortgage. PACE administrators and their supporters will tout the environmental benefits of PACE and blame consumer protection issues on a few bad apple contractors. The reality is that environmental benefits of PACE are based on modeling, not on actual work done. Moreover, the misselling of PACE that we have seen spans hundreds of contractors, and as recognized by the head of the California agency that regulates them, the PACE administrators benefit enormously from this flawed business model that allows contractors to sell financing for the products they will install and place huge liens on homes of people who can't afford them. So, we did manage to pass ability to pay legislation in California, and PACE administrators will tell you that as a consequence, their business plummeted. But our client numbers didn't plummet, they soared, and the cases we began to see were cases of outright equity theft. A huge number of cases we've seen over the past two years have been no work done at all cases, but folks are stuck with colossal tax liens, often supposedly for accessory dwelling units that we're going to see them into retirement, but in reality without a hammer being lifted on their sites. In a lot of those cases, paperwork was forged, and our clients were impersonated on calls with the PACE financing company. My recommendation is that you say no to any expansion of PACE. If you intend to go ahead, at the bare minimum, make sure there are robust consumer protections, and don't rely on the PACE administrators to do that for you. Require energy audits to make sure that the work is actually needed, as that happens generally in commercial PACE schemes. Require independent inspection of work before any payments are made, to make sure work has been done and done properly. Make sure calls to homeowners are made so that the contractor isn't there next to the client, coaching the client on what they have to say. Put price guidelines in place and make sure the PACE administrators and contractors abide by them, and make the PACE administrators compare the financing application with the actual home improvement contract. Best of all, don't allow contractors to sell this financing. If not, I want to give you a preview of what might happen in a few years. Last year, LA County abandoned its program. In so doing, it said that despite new state laws and the county's own attempts to implement stronger consumer protection practices, it said the county cannot be certain these measures will provide sufficient protection for all consumers. In December, Renovate America, the by far the largest PACE administrator in California, filed for bankruptcy protection. Take a look at some of the filings in that case. For example, the filing of the Western Riverside Council of Governments, a joint powers authority that used Renovate America for its PACE scheme. It applied for relief from stay, and their motion talks about their exposure to the tune of $8.5 million in legal fees, fees that Renovate was supposed to indemnify them from, but now they've declared bankruptcy, that insurance is not looking so great. Save yourself that type of exposure and don't extend your PACE program in your communities. Our communities like yours want a green energy future, but not one built on the back of our low-income Black and Brown clients or your low-income Black and Brown constituents. Help protect those constituents and help them protect that last bit of generational wealth they have to pass on to secure their community. Please say no to PACE, and I'm more than happy to take questions or to talk to any of you individually. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions from the council at this particular time? Councilman Bitch?
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Carroll, say no to PACE is what I heard you say. And I have to tell you, until this bill came up, I had never heard of PACE, so I've had to educate myself a little bit about it, so thank you for that. You say, "say no to it." So, if I'm a owner of a home and I have low income and my air conditioner goes out, it's going to be almost 90 degrees here soon. Who do I go to if I can't go to PACE? Who do I go to to get that loan, to get that money for that air conditioner to be replaced? What's the alternative is what I'm asking you.
Well, I mean, I think there are lots of potential alternatives, and some of that, I'm sorry to kind of throw things back to you, but some of that is in the hands of governmental authorities to make sure that there are like grant schemes to help people in that kind of situation, because the fact of the matter is, is that what I have seen is not what you're describing. I have never seen one client who has just bought one air conditioning unit with a PACE loan. Most of our clients have PACE loans in the region of $40,000, $50,000, often for not much more than an air conditioner, and that isn't the way to go. That's going to lead them to losing their home eventually. So, you know, I agree with you. People want green energy, and they want clean energy, and they want to be able to air condition their homes, but going down the PACE route is just not the way to do it.
So, I don't think I heard you say other than grants, try to get governmental grants or assistance. Do you think a bank would give them the loans for that equipment that they may need?
You know, I think it depends what area you're in and what, you know, community reinvestment your banks are doing. I'm also on the board of an organization called the California Reinvestment Coalition, where we work with banks to try and make sure that they protect the communities that they serve. Though, you know, there are possibilities also of, you know, other lending schemes. I don't know about in St. Louis. In California, there's something called the Jewish Free Loan Association that gives people loans, you know, for discreet purposes and allows them to pay them back without any interest. So, you know, I don't know exactly what's in St. Louis, but I imagine there are some similar things, and that's the kind of route that, you know, as council members, that I would urge you to investigate. Or, you know, if you want to do something and make loans, then make those loans yourself and don't do it through a private administrator.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Thank you, Ms. Carroll.
Thank you. Councilwoman Webb, I think you were next.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Ms. Carroll, I had a question in regards to the administration of the PACE program. Is there like a national umbrella? Is it the same administrators across the country, or is it different entities for different locations?
I am not 100% sure about that, and Stacy can talk about that, but certainly in California, there have been kind of five big ones. So, in California, they were Renovate America, Renew Financial, PACE Funding Group, Y Green Energy, and E3, or I think it's now called 45 Financial. And those, I have seen those crop up in other states, but I don't know whether there are also additional ones in other states that we haven't seen in California.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. So, Ms. Stacy, could you follow along with that? Do you know of the administrators or those who administrate the programs here in Missouri? Do you have any knowledge?
My understanding is, is that it is the same PACE administrators in Missouri as it is in California, because again, the program administrators are typically the same across... There is one entity, which is a member organization, which is PACE Nation. On their website, they do provide which states and PACE has been authorized, and the program administrators there. But it is my understanding that it is a limited pool of program administrators that are operating across the nation.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? I think Allison Snow, you're next. Welcome.
Thank you so very much. My name is Allison Snow. I run the Consumer Protection Division at Legal Aid Society of San Diego. Renovate America that Stephanie Carroll just discussed is based here in San Diego. We were essentially ground zero for the PACE program. My first client came in as a disabled, cognitively disabled 75-year-old who had his annual property taxes go from $300 a year to $17,000 a year. He was on Social Security, and his annual Social Security payments came to around $11,000. For him, PACE was a recipe for foreclosure. Right now, that same gentleman is now defending judicial foreclosure action by the reverse mortgage lender related simply because of the PACE liens and assessments on his property. This is what your consumers are going to face. Elderly folks are the target. They have the most equity in the home, and so they can get the biggest loans. The bigger the loan, the more money the program administrators make. The government does not pay the program administrators for their services. The only way the program administrators make any money off of these deals is by the amount of the loan. They get a percentage of the amount of the loan. The bigger the loan, the more money they make. So, they're making money off the backs of the most vulnerable members of your community, elderly folks who have saved up their entire lives, paid their mortgage down, and just want to enjoy their retirement. And for these unscrupulous business practices, they're stuck looking at foreclosure in their 80s. It's a scary situation. First, PACE is not green energy. It is a loan and needs to be treated like a loan. In my client's experience, they all receive assessment agreements, none of which contain the Federal Truth in Lending Act and Regulation Z disclosures. Every single one of us has had the experience, whenever we go buy a product that has a loan attached to it, we like to see the APR, the finance charge, set off bold distinct on page one, so you know what you're paying for, so you can compare apples to apples. One of the questions directed to Steph Carroll was what other financing options are available? Your constituents deserve to know that option. These consumers need to know what other financing options are available. This is a super-high-risk loan. It is a high-cost loan. It doesn't have the same cost limitations that the Truth in Lending Act regulates. It's a high-cost, high-risk, and then on top of that carries a super-priority lien. It takes before the first mortgage lender. For reverse mortgages, that's a violation of the deed of trust, as my client already experienced, and is now facing judicial foreclosure. So, these are a significant problem. You could have a home equity line of credit. Again, it looks at the equity, but it also takes into account the ability to repay, and the banks and traditional lending institutions have to follow rigorous underwriting requirements. There are no such requirements with current PACE iterations. The ability-to-repay requirement is not well-regarded. There's no rigorous underwriting requirements. I have three different families where the home has PACE liens on it, some of them exceeding $144,000, where the record owner of the property, which is a matter of public record. All you have to do is go into the county recorder's office and find out who the record owner of the property is, which is a minimum requirement here in California. It has to be with the record owner of the property. Since nobody is watching over these PACE administrators, these three families have over a total of over $250,000 in liens on their properties that the record owners of the property never agreed to, never signed, and have a huge liability and are forced to pay these annual tax assessments. Next is PACE does not result in energy cost savings. The original pilot program required a savings-to-investment ratio of greater than one. To get there, first, you need to have an energy audit to find out what the existing baseline is. Then, you have to establish that what's proposed to be improved will actually provide energy cost savings. So, when they got rid of the current iterations, all declined to follow the PACE pilot program's guidelines and decided to not have this savings-to-investment ratio of greater than one. And so, now you get the price gouging equity stripping scheme that Steph Carroll was describing. Finally, we see a number of cases. I have an 80-year-old client, Hispanic, who never signed a document, never entered into any agreement, and had a PACE assessment recorded against her property for fake solar panels for $54,000. The PACE assessments keep coming annually. She cannot afford to pay them. Her property taxes are now over $10,000. She cannot afford to pay them, and her house is going to get foreclosed on because of fake contracts, fake emails, and fake work. Inspections would solve those problems. Do not issue payment until the inspections are performed and proof of permits are pulled. Finally, I just want to reiterate that PACE increases the risk of foreclosure. It is a scary process. For most of the time, the foreclosure is by the original mortgage lender. So, like I said in earlier with my reverse mortgage case, the reverse mortgage lender has taken the position that just by getting a PACE loan, it's a violation of the deed of trust, and they can move forward with judicial foreclosure. The PACE program also allows the taxes after the first missed payment to be stripped from the tax rolls and immediately proceed with judicial foreclosure, often within six months of the first missed payment. A very dangerous program for low-income consumers. It is the least good option for low-income consumers. They could get a HELOC. They could get, even paying for it with credit card, while it might be a higher interest rate, would carry with it no risk of foreclosure. It is not a secured debt if you pay for it through your credit card. There are private loans through lending companies. There's credit unions that provide low-cost loans. There's a number of different ways to provide these, and without these special protections in place, PACE will continue to blight your communities as it has done here in San Diego, and you will have elderly folks and people of color really struggling to keep the equity that they've spent their hard lives trying to protect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the council members? Councilman Hart?
Yeah, I just want, just for clarification, the three speakers talking about the fraud that has gone on, and it sounds like it's pure fraud. These are all issues that happened in California, correct?
That is correct, though I do caution with this program, because it does take such a significant time for those payments to show up on the tax bills, usually as long as 18 months after they are originated. You often won't see complaints coming in until they actually show up on the property tax bills. So, there is already a significant delay of a program launch till when fraud is initially discovered, and I did do a quick check as to the program administrator for Missouri-St. Louis County program, and it doesn't appear that the program administrator is Y Green, which Y Green is one of the program administrators operating within the state of California and even has a class action pending to get for a program administration.
As you said, your own words, that PACE program and the things that happened in California was ground zero for a program that's been around how long in California?
So, it was originally launched in 2008 with the pilot program because of the litigation that by the FHA in 2010, it was put kind of on temporary hold. It rolled out in San Diego about 2011, and the first cases I started seeing, it didn't really roll out in full force, like where it was, it was really swinging until 2014. Between 2014 and 2016, it became almost a $4 billion program. And so, it was the fastest-growing form of financing in the United States, and it had only rolled out in California. It's because there was no ability-to-repay requirement, and there were no regulations. And so, without the ability-to-repay requirement, they were stripping all the equity from these homes. So, from 2014 to 2016, we see our earliest cases. 2016 is when my first case came to me. So, that's when I first identified the problem. Our elderly folks are the canaries in the cold mine because they're the ones who are live on fixed incomes and can't absorb the extra assessments. And the PACE assessments, you can't go to your assessment appeals board like you normally would to contest fraudulent assessments. There's no such mechanism in California to be able to do that, and so you actually have to file litigation to get these fraudulent liens stripped. And so, that's kind of where we saw it first, and so I started immediately contacting the CFPB. I've spoken with them, the Obama administration, White House regarding these issues that we were seeing, because I don't like to see 87-year-old clients getting kicked out of their house. I had a 97-year-old Tuskegee Airmen who got saddled with one of these. You don't need solar panels that bad.
For short amount of time, but I... So, what you're saying is that some of the abuses were because of the lackluster laws in California, and I believe a lot of states looked at that, you know, as a bad situation and tried to change state laws throughout the country because of the plight of these people in California. Is that correct?
That's what I hope is happening. I think at minimum, if you don't have federal truth in lending regulations and require at minimum federal or truth in lending regulations and Regulation Z, you're going to have a problem. If you hide disclosures and four pages after the signature line, that you're going to have a problem. So, at minimum, if that's not set in place, then you don't have adequate consumer protections.
And also, if I may, baked into this business model is the problem. The door-to-door selling by very interested parties in that financing is where you have a real, you know, is the crux of the problem and a crux of a lot of the, you know, the terrible things that have happened was because of the way it is solved. And just to kind of recap on one other thing, that, you know, there are other institutions like credit unions and community financial development institutions, there are other potential... There are other potential people that, sorry, institutions that people could get financing from. It's not that we are against green energy. We are not. We are very much for it, just in a way that's responsible and protects our communities.
One last is, is the issues that you're seeing with pace are somewhat the issues that were part of reverse mortgages when reverse mortgages first started. And then the government clamped down on that and put in a lot of hurdles that both the consumer and the lender had to jump through before someone could sign off on a reverse mortgage. Is that the kind of consumer protections that we need with pace?
Well, I think, you know, that can be an example to look to. And I believe, you know, if you require like reverse mortgages did, that homeowners go through a counseling session to determine the impact on their, you know, debt to income ratio, their monthly expenses, things of that nature. Those types of robust protections that are there within reverse mortgages should then be the same robust protections that are put in place in order to protect pace homeowners. And I would note that reverse mortgages still continue to be problematic. In fact, FHA has started requiring that a certain amount of the reverse mortgages even be set aside to continuing paying property taxes because seniors have an exceptional difficulty, given the fact that they are asset-rich and income poor in maintaining their housing. And so one of the problems with pace is, again, it is going to increase their expenses through increased property taxes. So even if they need to dip into the equity of their home through a reverse mortgage, the problem is is they won't be able to get one with a pace assessment. And then if they get a pace assessment, they will no longer have something like that or tool to be able to tap in to meet their monthly expenses. Really, what is particularly problematic about the pace program, in addition to the sales model and the way that it is, is the super priority lien status that is in place with the pace financing. By giving them that and requiring then that the homeowners pay back that, it's like paying a mortgage through your property taxes. Two annual installments you're paying, like my client, Ms. Foster, is really paying the equivalent of a monthly mortgage payment in two yearly installments. And that is exceptionally difficult for homeowners, especially seniors on a limited and fixed income. And so, yes, steps like that could prevent some of these harms and give homeowners the time that they need to assess the option and determine if that is the right financing. But I think you have to be very cautious and make sure that they are very, at a very high level because of the potential negative consequences that a pace assessment can present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no further questions, we're going to move on to Christopher Younger. Is Christopher Younger available, Chris?
Ma'am, he has not been able to log in yet. We've sent him a link to Tribe, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, so we'll. He's trying because he's a public counsel client who we wanted you to hear from, and he is trying to get on. So I'm not sure if he'll be able to or not.
Well, let me go to Alma. Is Alma Foster on? She is coming on by phone.
Okay, give me just a second. I'm going to have to unmute and then see and make sure I've got the right person.
Okay, that's fine. But in the meantime, while you're trying.
Alma, if this is you, can you speak up?
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
All right, we got it.
Oh, okay.
Yes, hello. My name is Alma Foster, and I'm 75 years old. And I was given an estimate for roof repair of $7,500 from the roofing company. And when we said we couldn't pay that, you know, it was just too much. He referred us to the HERO Company, as it was called at that time. Now I know it's Pace also, Pace Company. And that the representatives came out the following day and told us that this work could be done. It would not be a hardship. It would be affordable. And so that's how it was started. Now, I just want to explain that before this, my taxes had no problem paying our taxes at the time. And after the HERO program, our taxes increased almost four times as much. And we exhausted what savings we had trying to stay in the house. We've had foreclosures, a threat of selling the home. They came out and plastered the building with foreclosure notices for the world to see. Phone calls all times a day. People knocking on the doors wanting to buy the home. They even call on Mother's Day. They don't care. They call seven days a week trying to buy the house.
Thank you.
They, for one thing, some of the things that they did not do, they were supposed to remove trash daily. We had security, custom security bars all around the house. They removed those. They did not replace them. They didn't replace, take out the trash. They were supposed to do it daily. We had to pay to have it removed. Also, the grass was ruined, front and back. We had to have that redone to make it look, feel, look pretty. You know, the neighborhood is a poor neighborhood, actually. No one's rich around here, but everyone tries to keep their property up. And I did not want my home looking worse than anybody else's. So we had the stones and whatever put out where the grass once was because there's no grass now at my home. And also, as far as the foreclosure problem had been, I told you, my credit was A1. And I had never had any problems like paying our taxes. Because of this program, I had a dear friend, she's a widow, and we told her about the HERO program because she had some work that needed to be done. As a result of her dealing with the HERO program, she lost her home due to the increase in her monthly mortgage, which is over $5,000 a month. And she just could not pay it. Now, Johnson Roofing, we told them that this was just a repair job. That was the quote he gave us, $7,500 for repair because the roof was not leaking before they came out. And they were to replace and repair wood rot. And they promised to put in a AC. They promised to upgrade the electrical, none of which they did. I still, if it gets 90 degrees here, I'm just, I look like before because we don't have air conditioning. And finally, when the bill came, it was over $80,000 for the work that was not done. There was also, all these companies that were working on the house, we've had jewelry missing, yard tools were missing. Some days, they just did not sew at all. And so it's just been a total ordeal for my sister and I. We're both, like I said, in our 70s. And we had planned to live out our days in this home. We've been here almost 25 years. And now all that is uncertain as far as, you know, whether we will be here or not. And I'm sorry, I get a little emotional when I think about what we're going through and the possibility of not being in our home. I, yes, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Foster. I don't want you to get too emotional there, and we hear your pain. I want to ask if any of our council members have specific questions for you. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, council members.
And if I may, real quick, I am Ms. Foster's attorney. So if there are any unanswered questions, I'd be happy to also help in answering those.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Appreciate that. We do, we do, we do understand this is a very painful process for you, but I think it's important for us to hear. But if we have any questions, let's ask them of Ms. Foster now. Councilwoman Harder?
Just to clarify, is Ms. Foster, is she here in St. Louis or Missouri?
No, she is in California.
Ms. Foster? Let's let Ms. Foster answer.
I'm in California, Hawthorne, California.
Okay, what part of California?
Hawthorne, California.
Okay.
Outside of Los Angeles, about 10, 15 minutes outside of LA.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Foster? Because we're also going to hear from Mr. Younger. Thank you. Mr. Younger, thank you for joining us. If you can take your phone off mute, then we can hear you.
Is it off?
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So where would you like me to start with the HERO program?
Well, did you get a pace loan or?
Well, they call it pace, but we was calling it the HERO program.
Oh, okay. And what was, what, what, what did they tell you the HERO program was going to do for you?
They came to my house. They had a salesman come first to give my okay. And then they had another salesman come to get their approval to explain what was going to be, or work that was going to be doing. So they did the estimate for the roof, the windows, the bathroom, and the kitchen. And I think there was a $3,000 credit that was supposed to come to me. But somehow, the guy worked that $3,000 credit towards me getting my bathroom and my kitchen done. So I never received that credit. And then, like the other lady said, they had three or four different contractors come out. The guy for the roofing, I mean, they repaired my roof. Those contractors did a good job, but they, I had alarm wires and stuff running through there, and they said that they would put everything back. They didn't. They destroyed my gate. They did a lot of property damage to where the guy who signed me up was supposed to come back and repair, but they never did. The work they did on my bathroom and my kitchen is subpar. How do I know this? I got 20 years' experience in construction. And during the time that I wasn't there, that's when they so-called completed the work, to where I couldn't see the work that they was doing. So when I come back from work, the work that they was doing that was supposed to last two or three days, they almost had it done in one day. It looked good from a finished perspective right then. But if I'd have been able to inspect it while they was doing it, I would have known that they was doing a subpar job.
So financially, how has the program, has the HERO program affected you?
They told, yeah, they told me that I wouldn't have to pay none of this loan back until I was going to sell my house. And they said that I would have been able to get out of the deal if I sold the house before the first year was over with. But after the first year was over with, that's when I received a bill from my mortgage company saying that my mortgage went up from $1,700 a month to $2,500 a month, which caused me to go into foreclosure on my property, which forced me to do a bankruptcy on my property. But before the bankruptcy went through, I was able to borrow the money from Peter, borrow the money from Paul, anybody I could, just to be able to stay in the property. Because I would have had no other place to go if I wouldn't have came up with the money to pay the mortgage company to get out of the bankruptcy.
Okay. Okay, let me see if any of our members have any questions for you at this point, Mr. Younger. Councilwoman Clancy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Younger, for coming and sharing your experience. I'm curious, did you verify the terms of your loan before work started on your home?
What you mean verify?
Verify the cost of the project.
They told me that it was going to cost $54,000 for everything.
Okay. So what, tell me a little bit about what that looked like on your end. I mean, did someone sit down with you and walk you through all of the financial implications, the terms and conditions, that aspect?
Yes, that was, that was key. But the key part for me was not having to pay anything until I was going to sell the property because I have a lot of equity in my house, you know, which I wouldn't have been able to obtain by not paying the mortgage. You can't do a refinance when you behind on your mortgage. So I would have been able to pay that off if I sold the property. I wouldn't have had a problem with that. But when, after the year went by and the, and the mortgage changed from $1,700 to $25, I couldn't afford to pay the $25. And that's when I went into default on my property. And that's when, you know, like I say, in order to prevent the foreclosure, I had to file bankruptcy.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harder?
Yes, thank you. Is your, is your property here in St. Louis? No, my property is in Los Angeles, California. Okay. And how much, did you say, how much work did you have done as part of the loan? Well, what they did was, they did a bait and switch. They said that the $54,000 was covering the bathroom, the kitchen, the rain gutters, which they put in, and the roof, which I thought was a fair price. But, you know, being in construction myself. But come to find out that the only thing it did, it included that the $54,000, what they was charging me for was just the roofing and the windows, which is outrageous. I mean, it don't cost no $54,000 to replace a roof and replace windows. You're right. And so $54,000 was your loan? Yes. Okay. And did they do an appraisal on the value of your home? And do you remember what that is? The value of my home at the time was $200, no, $300,000. Okay. Did they require that as part of the financing to do an appraisal so that you would not get overextended? No, no, they didn't require that. They didn't require that. Only thing they required was my signature. And did you have, did you have other debt on your home other than that $54,000? At the time, no. Okay, thank you. That's why I thought it was, you know, beneficial for me to be able to do because I wasn't in debt. And I was retiring and on disability at the time. Sure.
But you did have a mortgage, Mr. Younger, didn't you? Sorry, this is Steph from Public Counsel. We haven't met. You speak to Kathleen. But you had a mortgage because you said your mortgage went up, yeah?
Yeah.
You have the mortgage, okay.
So your house was not paid off, in other words?
No, no.
Okay. That's, I think that's.
How much did you have left on your mortgage? Right now, is valued, I was trying to do a refi so I could repay them. Or I was trying to do a refi just so I can get money out of the house. But at one time, they was going to let me, they was going to sign off on it so I can do it. Now they won't do that. So I can't even do a refi on the house anymore. The house, the last appraisal I had on the house was $450.
Mr. Younger, do you know how much you owe on your mortgage? Mr. Younger, do you know how much you owe on your mortgage?
How much I owe?
Yeah, on the mortgage. How much mortgage do you have left to pay off? Do you know?
Uh, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Younger, for, uh, telling us your story. We appreciate you coming, uh. I know it's not an easy thing to talk about, but we do appreciate that. I wanna ask one question, uh, to the other folks who, uh, the Allison and, and group. Um, these loans are for people who do not, are not credit worthy. Okay, so the question was asked earlier, what options did these folks have? You, if, if you're, the, the article indicated in, in, in St. Louis, this was in St. Louis, they sold, they furnished to a man who had no utilities, period. So what I'm, I'm asking you is what other alternatives, the person, the credit union is not going to give people money. The banks are not going to lend folks money. And if you're in a house and it's freezing cold and you have children and you need a furnace, what are your options?
So.
Go ahead, Allison.
So one of the things is that, first of all, uh, the assumption is, is that people aren't credit worthy, but that's not accurate. My ninety-seven-year-old Tuskegee Airmen had almost a eight-hundred credit score. Uh, but he did live on a fixed income and he didn't have the ability to repay the ridiculous price gouging, equity stripping costs related to, to, and the upselling that occurs in these loans. So the assumption that these people are, are not credit worthy is not accurate. They do have alternative, uh, uh, available resources to be able to get this. Number two, there's no requirement for emergency or energy savings. So a lot of these people don't need solar energy. If you're eighty-five years old, you don't need solar energy, especially ten panels for fifty-four thousand dollars. Your energy costs are actually going to come, go up and make it more difficult for you to keep a house. Uh, so in these circumstances, there is no, they want to sell you that, but that's not what's actually being peddled. Most of the loans are for more than five thousand. In fact, many of them restrict their loans to only five thousand dollars. So if you only need an, an air conditioning unit that could probably buy and get installed for less than three thousand dollars, that air conditioning unit is going to cost you at least five, seven thousand, ten thousand dollars under the PACE program because there are no fair price guidelines. And so there are programs out there that will allow you to pay. Most lenders won't lend to you if you cannot afford to repay the loan. And so if these people cannot afford to repay the loan, then they can't afford to repay the PACE loan either. So losing your house versus having an air conditioning unit that's overpriced is not a good option. Losing your house for unnecessary solar panels is not a good option.
Right, the, the article, and hopefully you'll have an opportunity to read the article. These people that we're talking about here in my community were not credit worthy. So I, I, I'm not sure what the focus was, was the other folks, but these folks could not get loans at a credit union or a bank. Yes, they could have gone to Home Depot and got a furnace for a whole lot cheaper, but they could not, they did not have the cash money to have that, to get that. So that's, that's what we're grappling here with, you know, a need, a necessity. No, they didn't need solar panels. He need, she needed a furnace for her child and her to be warm in the winter, so.
But your PACE program wouldn't cover that because it's not five thousand dollars. Your PACE program wouldn't cover those. They don't lend on those small dollar.
Read the article from St. Louis, it was a ProPublica article, and these are examples that they gave in this article. And that's what has risen, uh, 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 to, to, uh, psyche here with the Councilwoman, uh, Dunaway. And looking and reading at that article and the kinds of atrocities that've taken place with that and, and, and the options that these people have, which were little to none, if you ask me. So listen, I do appreciate you all coming forward and thinking we have to move forward. We have about ten other people here, uh, that need to testify and, and, uh, and counseling. This is Councilwoman Dunaway's, uh, bill, but we're going to figure out how we can get, uh, the most of these people to be able to get through this. We, we have a meeting at six thirty, so we, we have a limited amount of time. And so I wanna cut it off there. I do appreciate that. I will give you this option though, if you have any additional information that you wanna give us, could you email it to us?
Yes.
And, and we will be happy to put that as part of the record. So I do appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Younger, and thank you, um, Ms. Foster for coming on and, and giving us the benefit of, 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 of what we need to look at at this point. So at this particular point, let's move on to, uh, our next set of, uh, panelists. We will start with Rachel Hobbs. Um, and you, you're, uh, welcome to stay on if you can or listen in if you can, uh, but we're gonna start, uh, Councilwoman Tracus.
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, my apologies, but I have to, um, leave the meeting at this point. I have a prior commitment that I have to deal with at five thirty. Um, but before I go, um, I do want to, uh, thank the panelists that have come to this point. And, um, just state for the record that, um, there's no way I can support this legislation. I, I don't wanna be a party to, um, the perpetuation of the, of allowing predators to prey on those least able. To fully comprehend what they're agreeing to and least able to cure any defaults. There are better ways to go about this. This committee should be spending its time trying to fashion a solution, not perpetuating a predatory environment. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate, um, the opportunity to make that statement.
Councilwoman Dunaway?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands what the piece of legislation before us today actually does. Um, and if it's okay, I'm just gonna give a, you know, twenty-thousand-foot overview and then we'll go into the pros and cons. So what this legislation does is it will allow us to bring the Missouri Clean Energy District into unincorporated St. Louis County to have PACE loans coming through that entity in addition to the PACE program that currently operates in unincorporated St. Louis County. And that is through the St. Louis County Clean Energy Development Board in St. Louis County. Some of its supporters and its lending company is here today to talk about what they do and we'll be able to ask them questions. And then also the Missouri Clean Energy District has representatives here today that we can learn from. Um, and, and ultimately decide, do we want for the St. Louis County Clean Energy Development Board to continue operating solely in the PACE space in St. Louis County? Or do we want to invite competition in? That's what the bill is about. Now, I also wanna ask, I, I also wanna just make sure, is there anybody who wants like a real quick crash course on what PACE is?
Are you asking anyone who is one of the panelists here to do that? Councilwoman Dunaway, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm asking if anybody on the council wants that. And then I, and then I can give it, and then I'll ask for backup from, uh, some of the, uh, folks on the, on the call probably.
Well, I, I think that, well, we have invited these folks to come. Uh, I, I think in the time that we have, uh, let's let them give their, uh, uh, um, presentation or whatever. And then Councilwoman Dunaway, if the council needs additional information, we're gonna always be here and we can do that. Is that okay with you?
It's great with me, and I also, all of these panelists know they've got three to five minutes and that's it. So they're prepared to be snappy.
Sounds good to me. We're gonna start, and thank you, uh, Councilwoman Tracus. Uh, we'll see you at six thirty.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Um, I think we started with Rachel Hobbs. Rachel, are you there?
I am. Um, I was hoping that you could start actually with my colleague, David Jackson. He's gonna give a quick overview and then introduce me and, um, Missouri Clean Energy District. So David Jackson would be the first speaker. Thank you, Madam Chair.
David, are you here?
I, I am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, there, it's up there, okay.
Um, thank you, everybody, for your time today. Uh, David Jackson and I'm here representing PACE Funding Group as well as the Missouri Clean Energy District. You, based off everything you've just heard and in addition to the recent media, I don't blame any council members for being skeptical about PACE, uh, skeptical about expanding PACE and, you know, very serious concerns about consumer protections, predatory lending, and everything else we've heard about. I think there are a few important factors to look at, you know, obviously it's very hard to, um, discuss the details of some of these situations without knowing all of the facts in the background. Uh, but I, I think it's important to clarify, I think as some of the council members did, that, uh, what we've seen in California is not consistent with what we've seen in, uh, in St. Louis and, and in Missouri. Uh, I think two vastly different markets and there are, uh, some movements going on both at the state level and in this legislation. As Councilwoman Dunaway mentioned, that I think go to the court addressing these issues. The Missouri Clean Energy District is currently operating in twenty-eight municipalities in St. Louis County as well as eighty, uh, municipalities, eighty counties and cities across the state. Uh, none of those assessments that have been issued through the Missouri Clean Energy District, uh, have done so without considering the affordability, uh, of the applicant, without looking at, um, their financial eligibility based off their current payment on property taxes and, uh, their mortgage, without looking at, um, in implementing a right to cancel, voice verification, two different voice verification calls, uh, written verification and, uh, and items that, you know, mirror truth in lending to look at payment schedules and what this is gonna look like over the long term. Um, one of the key pieces that, that is included in, in, in Councilman, Councilwoman Dunaway's legislation is a requirement that a contractor cannot be paid until the homeowner signs off. Uh, that's something that all of the assessments issued through the Missouri Clean Energy District have already implemented. Uh, and none of the issues that have been, you know, mentioned, uh, in California are, are present in Missouri in, in regards to that issue. Uh, I, I think that's a very big consumer protection, uh, issue that, that a lot of the recent speakers alluded to, uh, that simply is, is not happening here. Um, I, we could go on and on about some of the different consumer protections, but I think it's an, also important to note that uh, we, along with, uh, Y-Green, which is a competing consumer, uh, or administrative, uh, group, actually worked together and, and with Representative, um, State Representative Michael O'Donnell, who's on the call as well, in passing legislation, uh, through the state legislature in the last two weeks that implements a lot of these consumer protections as well. And we'll have the State Division of Finance doing examinations within the Clean Energy District. You know, we are, um, it, it used to be that different administrators, uh, and districts would fight for exclusivity across, uh, the country and now you are seeing, um, i- in multiple areas across the country where districts are coexisting to provide consumer options and choice. As you mentioned, Madam Chair, this legislation has been pending for several years now, uh, and gone through multiple sponsors on this. And there's been valiant efforts from, uh, some of the opponents within the PACE industry, many of whom I respect, um, that have, uh, bogged down this issue with sunshine requests, with allegations, uh, you know, of, um, you know, compliance with the, at the state and local level, and we have continued to fight those, uh, and, and try to correct action. And, and we are asking for really, uh, the ability to provide and inject some competition into the market. You know, St. Louis County right now is losing out on, uh, different capital providers that are not investing in St. Louis County because of the lack of opportunity to invest through the Missouri Clean Energy District. Uh, this is coexisting in multiple places across the state and the country. Uh, and, and we ask for the council's sincere consideration in both implementing these consumer protections and competition, uh, to make sure that, uh, people have, have options. So with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, but i- if not, would, I'd like to hand it off to Rachel Hobbs with PACE Funding.
Okay, David, I have one question. Uh, Councilwoman Dunaway started with the bill. We do have a substitute. Have you read both of those?
I have, yes, ma'am.
And the consumer protection you think, uh, is sufficient in the, in the substitute?
The consumer protections mirror what the patient nation standards are and would alleviate every single issue that is, was referenced by the previous, uh, speakers. With the exception of, I will point out, one of the issues was a kitchen remodeling, which i- is not included or even an eligible PACE, uh, assessment. And so, um, I, I don't know how that was ever issued in the first place and would question what that verification and terms looked like. But, uh, yes, I, I think the, the consumer protections that are in Councilwoman Dunaway's legislation are not only satisfactory, but they would also, uh, go above and beyond what was just implemented at the state level through state legislation.
Can you tell me why that there is a gentleman in my district who was, received a furnace and had no utilities? Can you tell me why that there are several people, as based in the article, that had problems with these loans? If what you're saying is true?
So, uh, Madam Chair, I, I think I would, on, on that, I, I don't wanna point fingers at, at any other administrators and I, I'd be happy to defer to, uh, the Missouri Clean Energy District or Y-Green on this. But, uh, I, I, I believe that those situations were not under the Missouri Clean Energy District, but rather the St. Louis County Program, uh, in the current administrator, uh, which I do not represent. Uh, so that, um, that is, I believe, was administered under the current program. So I, I don't wanna speak out of turn and can't, I would.
Which is what we're looking at is, as the current program. That's what we have now on the books, the current program. And Councilwoman Dunaway's, uh, is to change some of that. So we'll, we'll talk about that a little later. Go ahead, and, uh, I think Rachel, he wants you to come next.
Yes. Hello, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, council members. So I'm here representing PACE Funding Group. We are a PACE provider through, um, Missouri, Missouri Clean Energy District. And we've been, um, providing assessments, PACE assessments in Missouri since June last year. Um, and we're here before you today. Uh, Councilwoman Dunaway has, uh, brought forward this move that would allow the Missouri Clean Energy District and PACE Funding, my company, to, um, allow assessments financing in the unincorporated territory in St. Louis County. And David has outlined the consumer protections that just were passed at the state level. Um, also, uh, Councilwoman Dunaway has included those in her bill for the county. Um, just to mention, you know, we, uh, we do not allow any PACE financing on reverse mortgages. Um, we make sure we have two calls to every customer. The first call is with each customer, we go over the terms. Um, there are written disclosures, um, and, um, we talked a little bit about energy cost savings. That is a part of the law, law in Missouri that there must be energy savings involved. So it is for energy items. Um, our homeowners that we've worked with so far in Su- in Missouri and in some of the cities, uh, in St. Louis County have used these, um, you know, last winter was very harsh in Missouri. We have people who were able to use it for, um, emergency HVAC systems when weather was really cold. We've had homeowners tell us, um, how great new windows and doors have been, um, you know, really helping with their temperatures and, and really some dire situations while we've been able to help homeowners. Um, and.
So, so Rachel, let me ask you this. You say you do an energy assessment?
We do, um, so what happens is only energy efficient items are allowed to be PACE financed.
So would that be a furnace?
A furnace, yes. Furnaces are a big part in Missouri, definitely, yes.
And so before you would give money for a furnace, you would have an energy assessment?
Um, we, we only allow on certain items, on certain manufactured products. So we would look at the SKU number on the product to make sure that it was an energy efficiency item that was being installed. And we do do a hundred percent inspections, um, at the end of every project to make sure that the, um, the items that were sold were the ones that were installed, yes.
So let me make sure I'm understanding you. If, if this person is trying to get a PACE loan for a furnace, would you do an energy assessment before that? Before you sign off on a loan for a person with a furnace?
We don't do an energy assessment as such, no, because this is a replacement item. So we'd be replacing, but they would only be allowed to use a product that was an energy efficient product.
Right, I got that part. I got that part. So how do you know that putting a furnace in would be energy efficient? How would you know that without an assessment?
Um, just because of the type of the product that was being installed.
No, no, you're, you're missing my, you're missing my point. So you have no windows in your house, but you're gonna, you're gonna. No, no, you're missing my point. So you have no windows in your house, but you're gonna get a furnace. I want to know how did you determine that that was a good product for that particular home? He has no windows. So you're gonna give him a furnace regardless of whether the furnace is one of your high energy efficient ones. The man has no windows. That's why I'm asking for an energy assessment. If you get the furnace and all the high air is going out the windows, I don't care what, how efficient your system is, it's not going to function, right? So I'm asking, so do you do energy assessments on your kind of furnace? No. Okay. Any questions of Rachel here? Any questions for Councilman Harder?
This question is for Mr. Jackson or Ms. Hobbs. When you give a loan to someone, after you've done that, what role does the county's PACE board do? What's their role in this whole transaction? To supervise what you have and your vendors have done with the customer? Tell us how that process works.
Do you want to address that or would you like me to?
Oh, can you, David?
No problem. So through this legislation, the county would be joining the Missouri Clean Energy District, which is a statewide district, includes over 80 counties and municipalities across the state. And the county would be appointing an advisory member to the Missouri Clean Energy District that would help elect the board. The Missouri Clean Energy District is responsible for vetting and approving all of those assessments to make sure that they're compliant with the rules and guidelines outlined by the county in this legislation, as well as state legislation. In addition, the state legislation that was just passed will require the State Division of Finance to do an examination of every district every two years to go through and verify those thresholds are being met. And so at any point, if the county decided that the reports from the Division of Finance or consumer complaints directly warranted further review or repeal, the county council with a simple majority vote could repeal their membership of the Missouri Clean Energy District. But all liability and everything would be on the county, or I'm sorry, on the state Clean Energy District. It would not flow through the current county PACE that is in place. This would be overlapping and competition through the existing board.
So the current PACE board for St. Louis County is not using you as a vendor currently, correct?
That is correct. Everything right now is currently going through one operator and this would inject competition into that.
Okay. And so that one operator, when they find a customer, do they come before that board and say, I've got Mr. and Mrs. Smith, they want to put in a furnace? Do they approve that or is it just a oversight board?
You know, I can't speak as an expert to how the current county PACE board works since I'm not representing them and am not as familiar with them. That is my understanding, but I respectfully would defer to somebody who works within that operation.
Would you say that these current PACE boards in a county are there to give oversight to consumers to make sure that the vendors are doing what they're supposed to be doing? Is that the purpose of PACE boards in a county?
Yes.
Okay. And those people on those boards are usually appointed by whom?
In the Missouri Clean Energy District standpoint, as a statewide district, they are appointed and voted on by the advisory members of the member community. So the different 80 communities that appoint an advisory member to the advisory council there would appoint and elect the state board.
But in St. Louis County?
Councilman Harder, we have two members of the St. Louis County Board on the call. If you want to ask them questions about what their responsibilities are.
I'll direct my, yeah, my question to anybody that's on that board and tell us what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask, if we can move up Representative Mike O'Donnell, who's on the call. He has to depart in about 10 minutes. Can we move him up? And we've heard often about the state oversight changes of state law. Can we ask him to come in now?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Are you there, representative?
And Representative O'Donnell represents District 95 in South St. Louis County.
Are you there, representative?
Was, unless we lost him.
Chris, can you locate the representative?
I'm looking for him. He was in, but I think he's gone.
Okay, I knew he had another appointment at 6:00, so maybe he couldn't wait any longer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And let me just say for the housekeeping, we recognize this is a very sensitive issue here. And we may have to adjourn and pick this up a little later because we certainly want to hear from everyone about this issue. I've talked with Councilwoman Dunaway and she thinks that that is something that we can possibly look at. And unless she's changed her mind, okay? So the representative is not here. Councilman Harder.
Yes. Could we go back to Mr. Zajak since he is on that PACE board? And explain to us how that PACE board works in St. Louis County?
Certainly.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you and thank you, Councilman Harder. First, I want to say I am not a board member. It would be inappropriate for me to be a board member and an administrator. But as the administrator for the commercial program, we're very familiar with all of the underwriting, the history of the board, the creation of the board. So to be directly responsive to the question earlier, the board is appointed per the statute, the state statute, by the ordinance and only the county executive can appoint and the council approves and then both reapprove board members. So it's absolute local control. And the Missouri Clean Energy District, in our view, should not even be doing business in the municipalities. And they're well aware of the legal positions that exist on that. But we certainly would welcome other competition, other funders. We just think they ought to be under the control of the county. I live in Clayton. I work in Clayton. We employ 15 people here. Our doors are open. And we have transformational projects in the commercial side. I prefer not to get caught up in this, but these are heart wrenching stories about individuals. But I guess my question is, Mr. Jackson said that the, this sort of so-called statewide board, there is no such thing. It was a board created in Jefferson City. And they took a section in the law that would allow one or more boards to combine and essentially, you know, share the responsibility between the mayor and the county executive. And they're around just signing people up with ordinances. I have copies saying there's no risk. But I guess as a citizen, I'm okay whether we go back and RFP the next time around for the city. We did it fairly. We had multiple people. But I don't want a group from mid-Missouri who in their own bylaws early on said, we don't want urban people on our board. We have to make sure we do whatever we can. Mr. Jackson, who I respect, is actually reinforcing that the county would get an advisory member on that board, didn't mention that half the board is a permanent board. And so how how our great county could actually have someone who brought Renovate America through and paraded them to, you know, the answer to all issues? Now they're bankrupt. It's affecting the reputation of our state. We have critical commercial projects with sophisticated clients. And any commercial funder who wants to come into the county or the city can do that. We don't have any exclusivity. So I guess I really support the efforts on consumer protection. But I just respectfully disagree with any assertion that us joining this board with all of the issues they have, including $38 million worth of loans that are tied up in a bankruptcy account.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me, Councilman Harder has a question for you.
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick because they're short on time. Mr. Zajak, how many of the commercial loans that you've done since the beginning of PACE? How many are in default that you know?
In the county, there are none. And to be clear, you know, someone asked about, you know, how PACE works. The PACE assessment is in respect to the right to foreclose or accelerate Missouri is junior to the lender. A lender can come in, they can foreclose, they can take all the PACE improvements and resell. Only the county collector can go through the two, three-year process for tax sale. But we have none in default in the county and then in the city. And I'm speaking on commercial. We have people who have paid or who are late on payments.
So of all, so how many, how many commercial loans have you done total?
Probably 16, 17. We waited a year because we wanted to get will-level legal opinions. We wanted accounting firms to go through. We get MAI appraisals on every property. And we followed the statute in chicken ties. And nobody should be given an assessment that does not have the ability to repay. But we have a flood of about 50 property owners. Many of them are referred by banks who desperately need commercial pays. They have burned through their reserves to keep the flag on their hotel. They don't have the money to upgrade for COVID, for HVAC. And my concern is that these very, what appear to be very real problems with residential affect us in the county. If MoSED comes in to the county, we will want nothing to do with anything in the county because it will just blow up.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jackson, real quick, how many loans have your organization done in the St. Louis area and how many are in default?
If it's okay, I'd like to refer that question to John Harris, who's here representing the Missouri Clean Energy District and would know that figure more directly than I would, if that's all right.
Yeah, if we just stick to those numbers so we can move on.
Mr. Harris, are you there?
Yes, it's John Harris. To be responsive just to that, the number of defaults in St. Louis County are zero. The number of commercial transactions within the county, you can count on one hand at this point.
How many, how many loans have you done on residential?
Yeah, residential is a different matter. I think that that number probably is around 1,000, probably a little.
1,000, 1,000 loans?
Yes.
And how many of those thousand are in default?
Oh, none.
None. Okay. So the abuses we're hearing are out of state? Or is this just just stories? Is it just a California thing? What's happening here?
You're speaking of the folks who spoke earlier. I think these, we really know nothing of the facts of those matters. These are in California. All, each of these so-called administrators operate in California and had. And we in Missouri, of course, didn't start our program until some years after PACE started in California. And we were aware of a number of those issues, you know, related to consumer protections and, you know, ability to pay and so on. And those were all pretty much addressed by the consumer protections that we demanded in our programs. Many of the, I would say just quickly, that many of the things that we're talking about were fraud, in my view. And, you know, of course, any fraud in the program is a matter separate from disclose your consumer protections and, you know, financial matters.
So of the thousand then, we're calling this, it's how many are problem situations because of fraud?
We've had none in our residential program.
We've got a list by district of about 20 that are either in arrears or close to a situation of of being foreclosed on. So you, do you count that as either fraud or foreclosure in your numbers or not?
We are not in the process of any foreclosure. The Missouri Clean Energy District program is not in the process of foreclosure on any of the projects that were financed through the programs. So I don't, I'm not familiar with the list you have in front of you. But of course, the county has another program that it's operating with regard to residential financing in PACE. So I'd be glad to have a look at that, but we have no information about any foreclosures or fraud in that area. We do have an administrator that keeps track of the, you know, the tax bills. And there may be some existing delinquencies, but none so far as to go to the point of foreclosure.
So there could be other lenders that are experiencing that clean energy?
The Missouri Clean Energy District sponsors the Pace Funding Group and the Renovate America program. The only residential program operating in St. Louis County at the moment is the program sponsored by the county's Clean Energy Development Board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, I'm not sure if you're aware of how the process works here. You may not have the foreclosure on that end, but I will tell you, I have to sign off when these folks have passed the post-third sale property and they have, they have lost their homes. And then I have to sign off on those post-third sale properties. And many of those, and I'm looking at 10 right here in my district that are behind. And we're looking at a total of, I think, almost $100,000 in the arrears that these people have. And I have indicated to our revenue person that I'm not going to sign off on taking the homes of these folks if they are associated with a PACE loan. Because they've gotten the loans and they are behind in their taxes. And this is when the council people come forward. So it may not be on your end or what you're hearing, but I'm looking at a list here that I got from revenue that there are 10 right here in my district that are ready to lose their homes now. So I'm not sure what list you're looking at, but it's something, we're talking apps and oranges here, I'm thinking.
Yeah. I'm shocked that Mr. Harris is telling this board, there are so many delinquent Renovate America PACE loans. It takes two and a half years to go to a tax sale. And I believe that Representative Councilman Harder's question was on the commercial, how many delinquent? I thought the answer was five. I thought the answer was five. And if the answer is zero from Mr. Harris, then I think that's a real concern.
Well, let me just say this, I believe he said, excuse me, excuse me. I believe he said that there were a thousand loans residential that he had. I wrote down a thousand and he said zero are in default is what I wrote down. Is that correct, Mr. Harris?
Yes, yes. And.
And also, just a minute, you also said that you had limited commercial loans and zero were in default as well.
That's correct.
Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we heard, hear that.
Right.
So let's go back, I think Councilman Harder was finished with his inquiry. Mr. Zajak, you've had your turn. Mr. Harris, you've had your turn. Where are we going now, Councilwoman Dunaway?
Well, I, you know, we still haven't heard from anyone that currently sits on the St. Louis County Board, so we've got.
We thought that was Mr. Zajak, but he says that's not him. So who's on the call that sits on the board?
There's Matthew, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, sir, but you took.
Mr. Gersi?
Yes, Councilwoman Dunaway, it's Matthew Gersi, yes.
Thank you so much. Can you talk a little bit about, back to Councilman Harder's earlier question? What is your role as a, as a member of the, I don't know if I can get the name right?
Yeah, St. Louis County Clean Energy Development Board.
Yes. And what is your role in, in consumer protections and making sure that, you know, these loans are running properly? So talk about that if you don't mind.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So I am appointed by the county executive. I was appointed by the county executive in 2015 and just like many other appointments from the county executive, they ultimately are approved by the county council. I was approved in 2015 by the county council and that's true with every member of our board, all of them are approved or, I'm sorry, appointed by the county executive and ultimately they're approved by the county council. Certainly, you know, the reason why I became a member of the board was so that way affordable clean energy loans can be provided to county taxpayers at affordable costs. Certainly a lot of the allegations I've heard today, as well as in the article that was circulated a couple of weeks ago, are very certainly concerning. And so, so then I've talked to our residential administrator at Y-Green, specifically Byron Delir about that, who I believe is on the call. I know he has a number of responses about, in response to that. And so just to give the board just an understanding, so the, the Clean Energy Development Board basically hires through an RFP competitive bidding process, the administrators. There's a, a commercial administrator, well, which Mr. Zajak had spoken to, they do large commercial projects, hotels, office buildings, things that I like. Then there is a residential administrator who we have with Y-Green, Mr. Delir's on the call, and they handle more of the homeowner issues, a lot of that. And so I believe there's a lot more projects that they deal with in that regard. And so just so the board is clear, we, we hired both of those entities through a competitive bidding RFP process in 2016. We currently are on a pre-schedule before any of this meeting ever came up or the article came up. We're scheduled to do another RFP competitive bidding process this summer, I believe, hopefully will be issued in the next few weeks. So that's something we will be undertaking. Now, I believe it's sort of the role of the board, it's more of an oversight board. We meet quarterly every three months. We certainly approve a lot of the consumer protection issues, we approve the guidelines. And every single project or every single issue isn't brought to me. That's something I believe our former chair, who's no longer on the board, Jim Holtzman, would sign off on all the projects and he did a lot of the more, he was the chair of the board and he did a lot of the contact with the administrators in that regard. So I believe in terms of a lot of the other, the specifics of the council, questions that the council has, but a lot of the consumer protection issues which are valid questions, I would perhaps yield my time, rest of my time to Byron Delir at Y-Green, who I believe is prepared to give remarks on those issues and perhaps could be better in a position to answer the council's questions regarding a lot of the consumer protection issues and about a lot of the specific projects that occurred in the county.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dunaway?
Yes.
Will you preside momentarily? Please let me step away.
Yep, absolutely. I think Byron, though, you have slides, don't you? And I'm going to need Chris for that because he's going to have to let you share your screen. And he has disappeared.
Chris has disappeared.
He's probably like.
He's probably doing what I need to do. Let's go, let's, let's move to someone else and if you can't get, I see.
Chris.
Okay.
Chris, can you give Byron the co-hosting duty so he can share his screen?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Thank you. I'm trying to share my screen right now, trying to figure it out here. Okay.
And just real quick, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn over host of the meeting to Diane because I have to start, I have to open up the other council meeting.
Madam Chair, you're on mute.
Can you all see this screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Good evening, members of the county council. My name's Byron Delir and I'm program administrator for the St. Louis County Clean Energy Development Board, one of the program administrators. You know, I appreciate some of the detail on projects and trying to figure out what's going on with some of the issues that the chairwoman had identified. I also appreciate the opportunity to share with you the positive attributes and the successes of the county PACE program, which is providing access to capital for county home and business owners for vital energy maintenance and property improvement needs. You know, as an update, we've worked for the last three years in the legislature to codify consumer protections into law and I'm happy to report that that law has been passed and it's going to the governor for signature. In fact, as a point of information, the Missouri PACE statute from its origin was designed to be more conservative than the PACE statute in California. You know, earlier we heard a lot of the issues in California that had been going on and many of those issues come from, from several years ago before the consumer protections in the industry matured and evolved to, you know, to provide better protections for homeowners. But, you know, as an example of how the Missouri PACE statute and Missouri PACE program is different from California, in the Missouri PACE Act, there's a requirement that whatever is financed under the program and only energy efficiency and renewable energy measures are eligible, that these improvements must pay for themselves through savings and other economic benefits. And this is just one example of how the Missouri PACE program is different than California. If there's one main takeaway that I'd like to impart by my remarks today, it's the fact that the program in the county upholds as its highest priority, the deliver of many more forms of consumer protections from homeowners than other financing options. And this is what's critical. We've seen that when PACE financing is not available, property owners many times resort to less secure and more costly financing options, including unsecured loans, credit cards, and even payday loans, which can have interest rates exceeding 100% or more. What is noteworthy is that the county PACE program includes significant contractor training and oversight measures. Many of the problems that you heard earlier in California were contractor-related and indeed, you know, some, some of that was fraud-related. And I will share with the board that if you go to any attorney general's office in the United States, they will tell you that there are two industries that generate the most consumer complaints, either car repairs or the home improvement business. So we're in an industry where there is a lot of contractor fraud and there are a lot of issues. And I'll make the argument that the PACE program actually is a value add because we have a contractor oversight and training program where contractors have to sign a participation agreement that says what they can and cannot do in the marketplace. And like, like has been mentioned earlier, no funds are ever dispersed to a contractor until the homeowner has actually signed a certificate of completion, saying that they're perfectly happy with the project and the installation that's occurred. And this frankly just does not occur in other forms of home improvement financing. So one, one thing that I did want to also share with the board is the good news of a great local success story. With Y-Green, we've been working closely with MoCAN, the leading minority contractors association in the region. And the equity and inclusion successes that we've had in the city of St. Louis for the last four years, I've been conducting contractor training sessions for minority contractor workshops and pre-apprenticeship workshops. The equity and inclusion successes that we have entertained in St. Louis are now being replicated in a national initiative in metropolitan areas all over the United States. And this is, you know, it's, it's important for St. Louis to acknowledge when we actually do something that is, is being replicated in the rest of the nation. And I can say that the work that we've done regionally in the PACE program, it's getting that recognition. And, you know, one other issue that I wanted to share with the board concerning equity inclusion is the access to capital issue. So one of, some of the other folks that testified earlier talked about the other options that are available if, if a individual that's living in an underserved community cannot get access to banking or to HELOC or to home equity lines of credit. The PACE program has actually stepped in to help provide access to capital for those critical energy needs, whether it's a furnace in the middle of the winter, you know, we had a recent cold snap in February. I had a, a, a single woman that ran a daycare center out of her home and her heat went out when the, you know, the temperature went down by 60 degrees and she didn't have stellar credit and she couldn't get a bank loan and she was going to be, put the, a price of the furnace on her credit card. But the PACE program was able to step in and provide her the financing in less than 24 hours and get her that furnace. On the screen here, you can see an editorial that was written by Adolphus Pruitt, the president of the St. Louis City NAACP. And in this editorial, he accurately frames that there are systemic biases that exist in credit scores and in traditional banking. And this, you know, stems from the redlining that occurred in the 1930s where whole neighborhoods were written off from having access to capital. The PACE program, as Adolphus describes, is a forerunner of a revolution in finance. Why? Because the terms and rates are the same for everybody. Whether you live in Wellston or Ladue, the terms or rates are the same for any, everybody. And this doesn't exist in other forms of financing. And so this is kind of an equalitarian, disruptive, innovative financial model. I'd like to cover the consumer protections that are currently active in the program. And, and this is critical because it addresses some of the issues that were raised by the earlier folks that were speaking. So these are the consumer protections that are active right now in the county PACE program. We have a confirmation of terms call where every property owner is walked through every attribute of the financing, including the total interest, including the annual percentage rate, and they have to confirm in a dialectical manner, you know, that they understand this particular aspect of the financing and they understand this particular aspect of the financing. That terms, that confirmation of terms call is recorded and archived. We have a written know before you owe disclosure that tracks with TILA, Truth in Lending Act. This written disclosure mirrors a lot of the attributes of the confirmation of terms call. It says what the total interest rate is. It says that, that they will have a, a PACE assessment placed on the property and that they will pay back the financing as part of their property taxes. There's a three-day right to cancel, which also tracks with federal truth and lending act laws. That means that a property owner can cancel within three days for any reason. And again, the contractor accountability piece is, is a critical differentiator because other forms of financing have no contractor oversight. We have a certificate of completion that the property owner has to sign, as I mentioned earlier, before any payment is distributed. And finally, to encourage that property owners pay promptly on their first payment, we send out three separate payment alerts in a, in a number 10 envelope letter. We send out a postcard and an email reminder before their first tax payment, reminding of their payment obligation. The average monthly payment obligation on a PACE assessment in Missouri is about $125. The average PACE assessment amount is about $15,000. And you'll notice on this affordability slide that when you compare the PACE financing to other forms of financing, it has a lower monthly payment. Now, this is for a $20,000 principal amount. Like I mentioned, in Missouri, the average PACE amount is $15,000. But this shows that the monthly payment is about $167 when you have a $20,000 assessment. For a home equity line of credit, the average monthly payment is $188. For an unsecured home improvement loan, which many people in underserved communities cannot have access to, that's even higher, $264. A credit card is $690 and this is actually a lower interest rate for credit cards because if you have fair credit, your interest rate on average is well over 23%. Now, you may look at this home equity line interest rate right here at 7.7 and say, well, that sounds a little high. And let me provide the context on that. There are many people, you know, that are privileged that may be able to get 4% or 5% home equity line of credit. But again, if you have a fair credit score, your interest rate is going to be well over 7%. So finally, you know, I just want to close with.
$10?
Yes. Oh, sorry. So finally, I just want to close with the award-winning equity inclusion policy that we've been able to innovate here in St. Louis and PACE Nation, which is the National PACE Advocacy Group. They've released a press release a couple of months ago where 20 leaders in the PACE industry are adopting the model that we've done. You know, I work with Yafid El Amin closely on this project and I'm very proud of it. You know, 29% of the projects that we've completed in the city of St. Louis, for example, have been completed by minority contractors, which exceeds the executive order guideline. We are going to be expanding our MoCAN regional trainings to become more regional and, you know, very excited about that. And, you know, thank you so much for the board and allowing me to present a few of the attributes of the county PACE program. We'll conclude with the total numbers that Y-Green has provided for residential and small commercial, small commercial projects of under $750,000. We've done 18 of those and in total, we've provided $6.1 million in financing for 274 projects and it generates these triple bottom line metrics. 72 new job years created, $11 million of augmented gross economic output, 6,800 metric tons of carbon emission reduction. So this is just exactly the St. Louis County piece over the last five years.
Thank you so much, Byron, for, for that. At this particular point, we really don't have time to go further. We are going to, with the, with the agreement of Councilwoman Dunaway, we're going to adjourn this meeting and then regroup with the rest of the people who wanted to have, to testify and, and we'll move forward with that. It's, it's a lot here to uncouple and I think that with your agreement, Councilwoman Dunaway, I think that's the appropriate way to move forward.
I agree. And we'll, we'll get a time that's a little earlier in the day next time.
All right. That's, that's, that's your schedule. We'll, we'll work on your schedule there. Right now, we will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second?
Second, Dunaway.
Okay. And thank you all, the guests who have come, you know, to, to this meeting. Hopefully you will attend the next one where we can ferret out a lot of more issues about this and get some clear direction as to how we should move with this program. But thank you all so much. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.